Yes, a lot of our friends have just given up Facebook.
Facebook I can understand, but Twitter, I've had a couple of people like retweet my tweets. I'm feeling very special.
Why have you got that grin on your face?
I'm just listening.
Just look out.
All right, lock and load, ladies just come.
What, snowing out there by the way, right now?
You have to introduce me to do the pledge.
Miss Carey, am I Miss Carey?
I'm just kidding.
Nice, Carrie, nice.
I'm even here when you said that.
Something about a bio tendency.
Okay, I'd like to call the January Procosin City School Board meeting to order, and if everyone would please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have any additions and/or modifications to the agenda tonight?
We do. This evening, in light of the weather, we are not having our students here to present, and we also are not going to do our recognitions this month, but we will be doing those recognitions next month, and we'll bring the students who were going to present from the high school back to another meeting.
Thank you. And that will bring us to presentations and reports, and up first is our financial update from Mr. Bowen.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance update this evening, I'll begin with the budget. In the work session immediately following this meeting, Dr. Parrish is going to update the board on the Governor's 2015 budget. What I'm going to do is update the board on the caboose budget bill, which Governor McDonald released in December, and reflects the latest data and estimates on funding for the current fiscal year. Now, based on the caboose budget, PCPS is expected to lose approximately $22,000 in state funding, and this $22,000 is a net of several things that's happened or is occurring. First of all, let me start with sales tax revenue. The state has revised the sales tax revenue, and it's been reflected downward, and when this occurs, sales tax revenue goes down, basic aid goes up, but it's not dollar-for-dollar. So what we're seeing is a net reduction in the sales tax and basic aid of about $25,000. In other areas, other categories where we're seeing losses in revenue are specific programs, and it's related to either reduction in services or reduction in enrollment, and that would be to our remedial summer school program, the preschool initiative, and special education regional program. Now, in these programs, as we see reduction in services and reduction in enrollment, we certainly see a reduction in expenses, but again, it's not dollar-for-dollar. So when we compare the COUT tool that we built our budget on in the spring and what we're seeing now, we're seeing a total loss of about $90,000. However, the encouraging news here is that we're seeing a slight uptick in enrollment. When we built our 2014 budget, it was based on an average daily membership of 2,099 students. Based on our numbers today, we're looking at about 12 additional students in that funding. So when you take the additional funding we're going to receive from those 12 students, we get down to the $22,000 loss. So that's encouraging to note that we're actually seeing a little more enrollment than what we had budgeted. We tend to budget on the conservative side, usually five over or five under, and that keeps us really close with our numbers, so this is encouraging to see. Now, we'll have to see if these numbers hold, because our final funding is determined on March 31, average daily membership, so we still have a couple of months to go. In addition, the Governor McAuliffe has introduced some budget amendments to the caboose budget, so we'll follow those as they go through the General Assembly to see exactly how much further impact they may have on our funding for the current year. On another topic, I wanted to update the board again on the hybrid retirement plan. We talked about this a few times in the fall, but it was more specifically related to the Virginia Local Disability Plan, which accompanies that hybrid plan. Just as a reminder, the hybrid plan was effective January 1, 2014, and it's mandatory for all new employees without prior VRS experience. So any new employee hired after January 1 will be in the hybrid plan. The plan is also optional for our current employees, and there is an open enrollment that is occurring now. It opened January 1 and will run through April 30. Information will be going out this week to our employees, to all employees, about the hybrid plan, and will include instructions on how to enroll. Employees will be directed to the VRS website where information about the plan exists, and also, the website has recorded presentations and webinars for the employees to review. There's also a number of webinars that will be scheduled through the end of April, so if employees want to see a live webinar, they can go to the VRS website, and they can certainly participate. There are several webinars that are being conducted after 3 o'clock, so most of our teachers will be able to participate in at least one of the webinars. So we are very careful meeting with our employees and talking to them about VRS, because we are not financial and retirement advisors. So VRS has done the work for us with this information, so we're really directing the employees to go to the VRS website and do this themselves. If, after having seen this information, they still have questions, we will certainly direct the, we will answer those questions for them, or actually direct them into the resource that they can obtain to answer their questions. So that information will be going out tomorrow if we're here; if not, then it'll go out Thursday. So that's my finance update for this evening.
Any questions? I have one, Mr. Bowen. You said McAuliffe has proposals out there that could impact us. Is that a negative or positive impact? Do you have any idea?
At this point, we do not. We haven't looked at all of them. There was an email that came out yesterday, and just haven't had the time to drill down into the detail, but since they haven't really worked their way through the General Assembly yet, we have some time to look at that information.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you very much, sir.
And next up is our operations update, and Mr. Pappas is not with us tonight. He is at home. I hope you feel better, Mr. Pappas, and Dr. Parrish is going to take over that for us.
Yes, I don't know if I'll do this in quite the manner that Mr. Pappas does, but let me start first with transportation. The second of the required transportation employee in-service trainings will take place this Friday. All transportation staff will receive training on CPR. This training will be provided by the licensed nursing staff from within our own school system. Just as an aside, you may remember that it was a requirement as of this year by the General Assembly, that our teachers are all trained in CPR, and our students who will be graduating in the future as well, but we have decided that it would be valuable for us to train our transportation staff, so we are going above and beyond that requirement, but we think it's the right decision to make. In the area of plant operations, it's the second year that the Procosin Fire Department has conducted the annual fire inspection in all schools. Previously, this was done by a state fire inspector. The process worked smoothly. School administrators and teachers did a great job of having the buildings and classrooms in compliance. In the area of security, as you know, Virginia law requires that every public school have at least two lockdown drills each year. One must be in September, and one must be in January. All schools completed their second lockdown drill for the year. Procosin Police Department participated in each drill. After each drill, building administrators and drill observers continued the practice of reviewing the drill activities. So we had a very smooth lockdown drill practice throughout the last couple of weeks. And finally, bus evacuation drill for PHS was conducted last week. Each of the other schools is scheduled and will complete their drill as required, so we're continuing to do all the drills that we need to do. And that is my operations report.
Did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, next up is instructional update with Ms. Colley.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, members of the board, Dr. Parrish. I want to thank you for coming out this evening, even given the weather, so that we could look at our program of studies, because believe it or not, our high school students and our middle school students are actually becoming a little anxious about planning their schedules for next year. So it's hard to believe, but we're already at that point. We talked a little bit in our work session last month about this process, and let me just share with the community that the program of studies is a working and ongoing committee comprised of middle school and high school administrators, guidance staff, and school board office staff, but we're constantly sending out our program of studies to our teachers for review, for revisions, and input. We've been working since October to discuss our changes, to work on the program of studies, and we are in the process now of dotting the i's and crossing the t's and bring forth to you tonight a completed program of studies for approval. Last year, you'll note, you'll remember that we made quite a few changes. I think you'll see this year, we didn't make as many changes. We're working through the ones we made last year in all of our new courses. We plan to do the same thing we did last year. We're making fewer and fewer copies in this digital age, but of course, this will be up on our website very shortly for parents and students alike to refer to. So let me start with the middle school, and at the middle school, we've just finished up some technical revisions to making all of our courses, our names and our titles just aligned with one another, but we don't have any new courses or any eliminated courses at the middle school level. At the high school, we have one new course, and this is a change by the College Board. AP Physics B is no longer a course that's offered, and it's going to be AP Physics I. We haven't eliminated any courses, but we did go through pretty substantial technical revisions. Each department met together and walked through their course descriptions, making sure that some are assignments, that descriptions were accurate, and that prerequisites were accurate. The only other change that you'll notice is changes to the Modified Standard Diploma. We talked about this last year. Students with disabilities who entered in 2012, 2013 may have been eligible for a Modified Standard Diploma. Since then, all entering students with disabilities will be working toward a standard diploma, and so you'll see that change in the program of studies, and we will work with families and students through guidance and through our special education department and staff to accommodate those students and make sure that they are graduating with their peers. Other highlights are New Horizons, Regional Center revisions, and that is, some of you may remember that our Regional Academy used to be called GATE, and bringing it in line with our division goals and then also regional goals, they've changed the name to the Greater Peninsula Governor's STEM Academy. And likewise, no additions or deletions at the Governor's School, except for some revisions to course names. So again, staying the course with a very rich and rigorous program of studies and making some revisions to our descriptions, and that is my update. Do you have any questions about the program of studies?
Anybody?
Is the Governor's STEM Academy still a virtual academy?
It is not a virtual, not all virtual, no. We have pathways at the schools and through New Horizons, and then some of the courses, some of the courses can be done virtually.
Because GATE was entirely, wasn't at New Horizons, it was in every school division. The Governor's School was at New Horizons.
Correct. The GATE program, this is the GATE program. The names have been changed, so it's the same program where you actually earn the seal through your own high school. New Horizons is managing the paperwork for the state for that academy, but will be doing the same things that we've been doing in the past, and New Horizons is still sponsoring Saturdays for our middle school students as part of what used to be that GATE Academy, and we do have students participating in that. So there's been some nomenclature changes as a result of some of the things too with what's gone on with the state and what some other school divisions are offering as well. Hope that helps.
Does this mean the GATE merges with the Governor's School?
No, it stays separate in the same way that it was. Dr. Wismer from the Governor's School helps to oversee and get the paperwork into the state, but it's the same as it was, it's just been given a new name, and having school divisions take a little bit more responsibility for it.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is the Modified Standard Diploma changing to a standard diploma for all classifications of students, regardless of what type of?
For students with disabilities who are getting a diploma, I guess.
So it's regardless of what type of handicap and condition?
And if you can't get, if you're unable to earn the standard diploma, they may be able to receive a special ed certificate, but now, the only diploma that
Only one.
Students with disabilities are eligible for the same standard and advanced diplomas that we offer.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Colley. Mr. Cast, could you take us through the consent agenda, please? Yes. Excuse me. The consent agenda tonight is three items. A, approval of financial reports. B, approval of personnel actions. C, authorization to accept and expend funds in accordance with the attached request, and of course, all three of these are enclosed in your packet. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
And next up, matters for consideration, consideration of approval of minutes for the December regular meeting and the work session, which was enclosed, and do I have a motion to approve the December regular meeting and work session minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions there? Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Abstain.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six in favor to one abstain.
Thank you. Next up, consideration of approval of minutes of the joint school board, city council meeting, which was enclosed, and do I have a motion to approve the joint session?
I have a motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions there? Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
I have to abstain from that.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six to one abstain.
And next up, consideration of approval of the second reading of Policy 5-7.6, Employee Absences and Unified Leave, the sick leave bank, and there was a reading filed with that as well. Dr. Parrish, would you like to speak to that, or?
I think that it's all pretty explained in there, but I do say that this connects to what Mr. Bowen said in his finance presentation. We're having to make some changes because of the hybrid plans that are now coming in place, so this is, this change is a result of that, and so I recommend that you approve the change as proposed to policy.
Thank you. And do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about the?
Is this something that staff is well aware of?
Yes, and it will, it only impacts those that are now hired after January 1, so unless staff switches to the hybrid plan, and we find that to be highly unlikely that that will occur.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
And next is consideration of approval of the PCPS 2014-2015 Program of Studies. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Any questions there or comments there? I'm glad we're not having to cut any more programs, that's pretty nice. Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
And next, we have consideration of approval of the fiscal year 2014 Capital Improvements Program, which was enclosed. Do I have a motion to?
Let me, if I can interrupt on that one.
Okay, sure.
I just want to make sure that we are putting that on the screen for the community, because they would, may not have seen this, we did discuss this in your last work session. I just want to draw everybody's attention to the fact that if you look at the CIP for 2015 through 2020, what we've done is pushed out in years the needs that we have at the different schools. I wanted to highlight that we do have across the center the comprehensive facility study that's under review for PMS. Clearly, as you all know, the school division, by using the facility study that was done by an architectural firm, presented the information to you and council. You had actually seen earlier in the fall, but then the joint meeting with council to them as well, with the five options that are there that would address the needs of the middle school, and those options are still under review by both you and council, and as we move through the year and get a better picture of the financial outlook, both for next year and the following years, then we envision that you and council members will be talking about it again at some point as we move into the spring. So I wanted to make sure the community was aware of that. All of the other needs that are listed there are certainly things one would anticipate, roof replacements, just as when our homes get roof replacements, oftentimes after 20 years, we expect that we need to do that with our school buildings as well. And then you also see down on the bottom, bus replacement schedule. We do, we still do run some quite old buses with some high mileage. The state did change the replacement cycle from 12 to 15 years, however, we still have buses that are beyond that at that point, so we continue to put the bus replacement schedule on the CIP, because we currently do not have funds for that either. So with that said, I would recommend that you approve this, and then I will bring it to our city manager, Mr. Wheeler, and he will incorporate it as part of the overall city CIP, and city council will then have discussions about funding.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the 2014 CIP?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Does anybody have questions or comments on that? Okay, could you call for a vote, please, Ms. McDowell?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
And next up, consideration of approval of the request for an extended field trip to the Czech Republic, and that was enclosed as well. Dr. Parrish, would you like to elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, as you know, and many members of our community know, we do have a partnership with the school in the Czech Republic, so each year, we have students from this high school in the Czech Republic come see us in the fall, and then we have students that go to visit that school in the spring. So we bring this one to you, because it is an international trip, so we do seek your approval, and we've been running this partnership for a number of years, and you've, on some occasions, met some of the visiting students from the Czech Republic. So it's certainly a great experience for our students, and in this era of globalization, it's nice for them to have the opportunity to do some international travel, and those that don't do that, at least engage with those students that come to us as they do presentations in the classroom. So I'd recommend that you approve the extended field trip to the Czech Republic.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the request for the field trip?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Any questions there or comments?
Good program.
It's an excellent program, great opportunity, so I'm glad.
I think several of us have met the children from the public, and we know some of that have traveled, so excellent program.
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Hall et al. for continuing to do that for us. Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
And next up is consideration of approval of the proclamation for National School Counselors' Week, and school counselors, of course, are employed by the schools, help students reach their full potential. They're actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, and make them aware of careers that are out there, and assist them with awareness and development towards those career opportunities. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation for National School Counselors' Week?
I move that we approve.
And second?
Second.
Any questions there?
They do a lot of extra duties. I've noticed they're very busy, many, many things, but the
Yeah.
I'm sure their schedules are full.
Thank you. Could you call for a vote, please, Ms. McDowell?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
And last, on the matters for consideration list, is a proclamation for Bully Prevention Month, and it says, "An estimated 160,000 students in kindergarten through 12th grade miss school every day due to a fear of being bullied." And it can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and most recently, in cyberspace, and it can happen in many places, on and off school grounds. So do I have a motion to approve the proclamation for Bully Prevention Month?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions there, comments? Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
All right, so next up is communications, and Dr. Parrish, if you would like to kick us off?
Well, probably the biggest announcement that people would like to hear is that we are announcing, and phone calls should be going out momentarily, that we are closing school tomorrow. All school activities will be canceled, and essential personnel should plan to report at 10 o'clock AM tomorrow, and clearly, tomorrow, we'll be able to make some decisions about Thursday, once we get a sense of how the roads look, and if we're going to be able to get them cleared in the very cold temperatures tomorrow. So with that said, high school students, yes, you do not have your exams tomorrow, but as you know, they will be pushed back to the following day, and it does mean we may need to go into the following week to complete our high school exams. So I wanted to give that update to the community, and as I said, that will be going through telephones momentarily, and also, we'll have that on our website as well, and get that out to the media. So if your phones start buzzing while you're sitting here, you know what your phone call is. I just want to remind the community that, as Mr. Bowen mentioned, I will be doing a budget update during your work session, and had hoped to actually do that in the schools today, but with the coming weather, decided that teachers had other things to focus on later this afternoon, so we'll get into the schools in the next week to give that update as well, just so we have a sense of where we are. But at this point, based on the information we have, we will be cutting again this school year, but we'll provide details as we move forward. On that note, too, the General Assembly is quite busy with a number of educational bills, so I just wanted to let the board and community know that we are tracking those bills, and I am having now regular conversations with our legislators, supporting some of those bills, and asking them not to support other bills. I do want to thank Delegate Halsel. He has been in touch frequently. As you know, he is our delegate. As you know, he is our delegate. He does live here in Procosin, but is a great supporter of K-12 education and continues to show that enrichment, so we appreciate that. And that really is my report for this evening. I do hope, as I said earlier, high school students do well in their exams and that everybody stays safe and warm tonight and into tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Marissa, thank you for your dedication in coming out to be here with us tonight, because she was given the option of staying home, and that's why we did not have the student presentation, so I appreciate you being here. Make sure you're safe going home. So take it away.
Good evening. At Procosin Primary School, curators from the Virginia Living Museum recently visited the primary school as part of the museum's outreach program. First graders learned about animals and their habitats and life needs through the use of animal hand puppets and umbrella habitats. Procosin Elementary School got together with Becky Morrison to organize Cookies Because We Care at Procosin Elementary School. They collected around 116 dozen cookies. The division total was 12,000 cookies. Fourth graders recently learned about early struggles and economic ventures of colonists by handling reproductions of objects made during the class. Procosin Middle School started their 18-week test on January 10, and they will continue through January 24. NJHS sponsored a bake sale to raise money for a shelter box and raised $362.50. Oscars for books will be held in February. Students can sign up in the library to reserve a book pan. Check out more details at the Procosin Middle School Library. Procosin High School has midterms, had midterm exams today and have them continuing this week. The students had a full day today, but the rest of this week, they will have half-days. Mrs. Hall's AP Environmental Science class made lasagna to serve at the Peninsula Rescue Mission. On January 28, they will serve the lasagna, salad, bread, and drinks. The project wrapped up their unit on world poverty and hunger. SOL tutoring is now taking place at the Procosin High School after school, and make sure to check out EdLine for details on their dates.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rollins?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Dr. Carter. In honor of Bully Prevention, Bully Prevention Month, I'd like to put emphasis on that. I personally witnessed the senseless destructiveness of bullying when I was in school, and just like to advise students and parents how seriously we take this and that bullying will not be tolerated within this school district. Also, Dr. Carter, Mr. Vice Chairman Cast, I look forward to seeing each of y'all at the city council work session on Monday night.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ms. Whitaker?
I'd like to thank the staff and the bus drivers for getting us through that polar vortex time. I think, thank, for the parents and the kids for dressing their kids up warm and doing a little dance at the bus stop if they needed to, just to keep the blood flowing. I think it was a right decision that the superintendent made. It was right for Procosin. I understand delays were right for other school divisions in the area, but I think it was absolutely the right thing to do for Procosin. It's not an easy decision to make when you open schools or delay opening or close schools, but I think we should all trust what the process that we have here in Procosin, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Sidner?
I would like to congratulate all the high school and middle school band students that tried out for district band at the beginning of the month and that made it, and I look forward to the concert at Keketan High School on February 1, I believe it is. So congratulations to them.
Mr. Melton?
I will also, Roger, up to missing our student presenters, it's always good to hear from engineering and drawing students. I would mention I was going to Richmond tomorrow, but that has been canceled, so there is no Career and Tech Ed meeting in Richmond tomorrow, thank goodness, because we were going to come from all areas of the state to make this meeting, and that would have been unsafe. And since I was not here in December, I'll just wish you all a Happy New Year.
Thanks, sir. And Mr. Cast?
Thank you. I'd also like to thank Delegate Helsel for all the communication, all the work that he's doing, and making sure that we're aware of what's going on at the General Assembly. I actually ran into him up there, and first thing out of his mouth before I could say hello was, "I'm doing work on this A through F grading system," so he's doing, doing great work. Also, as I've been driving around Procosin, I've noticed a lot of homes for sale. Parents, everybody, tell your friends with children out of the district to take a look at these homes and move in. It could help tremendously the school system, so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And I'd like to piggyback on something Ms. Whitaker said. The board has all the confidence in the world in the administration's decision whether or not to keep schools open or to close them. It was the right decision, and I applaud you for the courage to do that. And good luck on exams, and as I believe Mr. Hux alluded to, he, Mr. Cast, and I will be attending the city council meeting Monday, sort of in light of what Dr. Parrish talked about with CIP and where the city stands on finances, because, as you know, they are incredibly supportive of the school system, and they want to do what's best for the school system, and they have their financial issues to deal with as well, so we're going to go there to support them, and hopefully, all will turn out well. And do we have any material for board review?
We do not.